This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 6th Board of Selectmen Meeting. I'm Mike Frieda, North Haven's First Selectman, joined by our Second Selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our Third Selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Before we get started with public comment, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. We lost one of North Haven's wonderful citizens about a week and a half ago, Mr. Sherman Katz. And Sherman was here for most of the Board of Selectmen meetings, for just about all the Board of Finance meetings. He spoke regularly at the town meetings, and I can still see it, ladies and gentlemen, like it was yesterday. I walked into this room for the first time. I had been recruited to sit on the Board of Finance before I even realized I'd end up being your First Selectman. So I walked in this room, and my seat was here where Sally is. And Mr. Sherman Katz was sitting in the first seat in the first row. When I walked in that door, I was greeted with a big smile. He walked up to me. He shook my hand, and he said, "Mr. Frieda, we're happy to have you. You come from the corporate business career. I'm happy to have you," he said. So we hit it off right away. We became very good friends. But Sherman was also the type that we had a lot of respect for because if he didn't like what he saw in the government, or he was questioning us on the Board of Finance, and in later years when I took office as the First Selectman, he'd be here, and he would sometimes get into a debate and tell us, and me in particular, that he didn't agree with some of the things that were happening. We had a lot of respect for Sherman that way. So I'm going to ask for a moment of silence, then I'm going to turn it over to Sally and Bill for a few words, if I can ask you for the moment of silence. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. And Sherman, I have a feeling you're with us tonight. May you rest in peace, my friend. Sally?
Yes, I had a long history with Mr. Katz. I always tried to return phone calls within 24 hours when I get them, but when Mr. Katz left a message, I returned it right away because he deserved it. And our town government, this Board of Selectmen Town Meeting form of government, really relies on citizens like Mr. Katz, who care, who come to the meetings, come to the town meetings. It's such a critical part of our government, and I know that he inspired a lot of people, and he had quite a following. And just from some of the comments about him on social media, people saying, "I didn't know him, but I liked him." And I wish, you know, I had the courage to do what he did. And the turnout of so many caring people at his wake was really a testament to what a great, great man he was. And longtime North Havener, businessman, and from what I understand, he'd been coming to... I've been here 12 years now. He's been coming here quite a few years prior to that, always caring for the best interests of the town. I know one time you told me, this was before I got here, there were some problems with the library roof, and he said, "Hey, did you look into the warranty?" And sure enough, it was still applicable. So you can make a difference if you pay attention and care about your town. Isn't that... Am I recalling that correctly?
That's exactly right, yes.
And he also initiated the menorah lighting ceremony, which has become a standard part of our yearly calendar. And, you know, in those first couple of years, you and I were there, there were just a handful of folks, and now with Mr. Katz's constant support and backing, it's built up, and we have music and food there, and it's quite an event. And that, again, is a testament to what you could do in this form of government. It's really a privilege to have this form of government. And Mr. Katz was the kind of individual who saw that what he could say mattered, and what he said and what he thought did matter in our town. And I always looked forward to his public comment. He always had his list. You know, when he would walk up with the list, you were wondering if you were on the list or not, you know? And he just brought so much to the Public Comment podium, whether here at the Board of Selectmen or at the Board of Finance. And so I have an idea that I would like to propose to you. We have our podium here with, of course, our town seal down below, but up above there's a little bit of space, about this high. If we could put a little plaque that just says, "In memory of Sherman Katz, a great North Havener," or something like that. What do you think?
I like it a lot.
Everybody? Yes. If you'd like, I could work on that, and maybe I know somebody in town who might be able to prepare one for the town.
Yes.
And we'll acknowledge that.
Yes. I think it's a better than a perfect fit there on the top.
Yeah, just a little plaque, and we could have his lovely wife Sally here and have a little ceremony showing and dedicating this podium and future podiums as they may come about as the Sherman Katz podium.
Yeah, I like it a lot, Sally. I think it's a great idea. We'll bring in his son, Mike, and his daughter, Sue, and their spouses also, and we'll move forward with this. I like it a lot.
This is how important public participation is in our form of government, and with the passing of someone who really was a testament to the potential for individuals, for citizens to participate, I think it's fitting to name the Public Comment podium for him. Thank you very much.
And we'll want to hear from Bill in a moment, but before we do, I think what we should do to make it official, we'll propose a motion to do that, and we'll memorialize it with the Board of Selectmen agreeing to it.
Okay.
That's okay. So Bill, I know you'd like to say a few words also.
I think that was a very, very good suggestion, Sally, on your part. And, you know, I'll second everything that both Mike and you said, Sally. He was definitely a model citizen in terms of... or a model for what a citizen should be in terms of how he was engaged, always engaged, came to the meetings regularly, was thoughtful, well-informed, and always presented his viewpoints in a very positive, never critical way, that actually, you know, gave him real credibility. He actually, you know, there was a... Years ago when I... Him and I first met, and, you know, that further, I think, created, you know, not only based on how he was and what he did at our meetings, but he did have a... He did know my cousin and his wife in terms of his family. And so, you know, which we found out, we found out very early in our relationship. So I felt a bond to him, not only from what we do on behalf of the town, but also personally because of his relationship with my cousin and his wife. He was a very good person, and one of the things I've said often is, and it's very true tonight for everybody that's here tonight, one of the best things that we do is that it's publicized on TV. One of the worst things we do is it's publicized on TV because I really believe that interaction on a personal basis, and there are a couple people here who regularly come to our meetings, it's a very... It's very quiet. You can't get any feedback on TV. So I really appreciate everybody that's here tonight and who comes here whenever they can or on a regular basis because it really is an important part of us, whether it's on this Board of, you know, Selectmen, or the Finance, or Planning and Zoning, to actually have people really give us feedback personally. You know, it's one thing maybe to send Mike an email or the town an email, and it'll get passed around, but there isn't that interaction or play that we would have with Sherman and some of the other people I'm very thankful who are here tonight and come regularly that actually, I think, add to the discussion and actually make the Board of Selectmen and our other commissions better. And Sherman did that to a level that you can only say deserves a plaque, like Sally said. But thank you. Thank you, Sherman.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, before I make the motion, I just wanted to make one other comment. For those who are watching right now, and I know there's lots of folks watching regularly who wrote on social media how they were inspired and wish they could come to meetings like he did, perhaps you could reflect on his passing and find it within yourselves to come and pay us a visit and come to the microphone. We welcome all citizens, and you could talk to us about anything. So please consider coming. We really look forward to the public comment. It's my favorite part of the meeting. So I will make a motion.
Maybe before you do the motion, I think the other thing is that, just for everybody that's listening, and if you think about Sherman and others that maybe have come to the meeting, is that we have an agenda, but the comments that you can make under Public Comment are not limited to the agenda.
That's right.
It could be on any topic that may be of importance to the town and us as citizens and residents in the town. So, you know, if you look, the agenda's posted online, but it doesn't have to be... It could be separate from the agenda.
Yes, and North Haven is somewhat unique.
We are unique. We're one of the few towns that... We started this years ago here, that you could not have a time limit. Most cities and towns are three to five minutes, and we're one of the very few towns that allows questions beyond the agenda itself. Years ago, I made a statement here. I'll stay here all night long answering questions. And my colleagues kid me about this because they're very regimented, three to five minutes, strictly agenda items. And about a half of those municipalities, they will only accept comment on Public Comment. They don't engage in answering questions like we do here. So that's a very good point.
Yeah, and I mean, this... We're your local government. We are the ones providing you with the services that you count on day-to-day, week-to-week. Unlike the state level and certainly federal level, you could really make a difference here. So please... And the best way to honor Mr. Katz is to come to the meetings, and let's hear from you. So with that, I'll make my motion that the Board of Selectmen authorize a plaque in honor of Sherman Katz to be placed on this podium and something to the effect of, "In memory of Sherman Katz, a great North Havener," or whatever. You know, something like that. So I believe it's fitting that we have that type of memorial to him. So I'll make that motion for that plaque.
Do a second.
I'll second Sally's motion.
All right. Motion, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. And item number two, any public comment to tonight's agenda? Okay. We'll move to item number three, the approval of the Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes from January 2nd. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Motion, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, the approval of the Board of Selectmen Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes of January 6th. Is there a motion?
A motion for approval of those minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're going to item number five. I was going to dispense with item number six, but I'd like to introduce Mr. Gavin Naft. Gavin, good to see you here tonight. Gavin is our 2025-2027 Youth Poet Laureate. So I, Sally, and Bill would like to thank you very much for being here.
Of course.
I understand you're a very creative young man, and this is something that was presented to us years ago by Ms. Buemi. We like this poet laureate. We're happy you're here for the Youth Poet Laureate position, and I understand that you have a poem for us this evening.
I do, yeah. So just to introduce myself, my name is Gavin Naft, and I'm North Haven's Second Youth Poet Laureate. I look forward to working with the library for the next two terms to promote poetry in our community, specifically among teenagers and elementary school students. I'm a junior at North Haven High School, and in addition to playing for both the varsity hockey and lacrosse team, I've served as class president for the past three years, and I've recently founded a literary magazine for the high school. I feel extremely grateful and excited to be selected for this position, and tonight I'll be reading a poem titled "Buried in the Snow." In the deep winter, I have found that if you get up early, you could hear the planet stretch and moan before its eyes fully open. The earth's job is short during these months, but ours are not. The sun waking up later and clocking out at an earlier time results in us leaving in the dark and returning with little light. There is an inescapable melancholy, a blue fog that will sift over those who let it. But if you listen close, there's a song in the stillness, a quiet hum beneath the ice, a gentle reminder that even gloom, even in gloom, there is life, there is growth, just unseen for now. It is the beauty before the bloom. Winter silence, where we learn to live with less and to fight to find more. Thank you.
Well, let's give him a nice round of applause. So Gavin, I have a couple of questions for you. So you're a junior North Haven guy. Are you examining colleges that you'd like to go to, or is it too premature at this point?
Yeah, I'm starting to, probably in like April to start to visit some colleges.
And your major would be? What were you looking at?
I'm probably going to major in something broad like English and then like figure it out from there.
So when did this gift come to you, the ability to put words together to create these wonderful poems?
Thank you. I would say that I found my passion for writing and the subject of English in like around seventh grade. I kind of started to explore with all forms of creative writing, specifically like screenplays and movies. I was really interested in that, and I always loved movies, and then when I found out that they had to be wrote, that the screenplay was a part of them, I found great interest in that. And then, like recently, like last summer, I really fell in love with poetry and being able to express your feelings and emotions through words. So, yeah, I'll say that.
Do you find the words flow easily, or do you have to take time to put the words together?
I would say it takes time, especially with poetry. It's easy to like have a thought or a feeling, but it's difficult, I would say, for everyone, even the most talented poets, to express it through words. It's a... It's a long process, I would say.
So tell us about your sports careers. I know you mentioned the two sports. Tell us about how you're doing.
Yeah. Well, I play hockey and lacrosse for North Haven High School. So I'm a junior, so it's my third year, and we found great success freshman year. We won the state championship for hockey, so that's been amazing. It's been such a great experience. It's a really big commitment at our high school, specifically for hockey. The coaching staff and players take it really serious. This year, I unfortunately got injured. I broke my collarbone, so I'll be out for the season. But it was a really great year. I played for about like half the year, and then I got hurt like two weeks ago. And then lacrosse, I wouldn't say it's as much of a commitment, but it's still fun, and it's a good way to end the year.
Was it surgery, or just with the...
No, yeah, so it's not really... It's not displaced enough to need surgery. So I was lucky. It just like snapped in half, but no surgery.
Well, there's no question in my mind that you're a fine young man, and we would be willing to help you in any way, even if you need a letter of recommendation when you go to your... Whatever college you go to, please give me a call. I will do that for you. And I really want to thank you for being here. Sally and Bill, would you like to say anything?
I have a question. I like Walt Whitman. Who is your favorite poet?
Oh, that's a really good question. I would say that my favorite poet... I know it sounds... Well, this poem was actually inspired by Walt Whitman and some of his works. So I know it's cliche to copy your response, but I kind of fell in love with poetry by reading his works specifically, specifically over the summer. My father actually introduced him to me, so he's had like a major influence on my life.
That's great. And I... We spoke earlier before the meeting started, so keep an eye out. We're in the process of appointing a new adult poet laureate, so pay attention to that, and hopefully you'll be able to work with that person.
Yeah.
Perhaps at library programs or things like that.
Yeah, I look forward to that.
So we'll be appointing... Interviewing among the committee again to select, and we'll be selecting a new North Haven poet laureate within a few weeks, I think.
Awesome.
Okay?
Not to put you on the spot, but along the same lines as Sally, the... What's your favorite stanza or lines from either, you know, from your favorite poet or from some other poem that actually maybe has inspired you?
I would say Dylan Thomas, his favorite... His famous poem, "Go..." I forgot how it goes, but it's... How's it going?
That's okay. I just didn't want to interrupt.
It's something about like going hard into the Dark Knight, or something along those Yeah, just... I find that poem to be very inspiring.
Great.
Well, I'll leave you with this, Gavin. The fine work that you're doing not only is soothing to hear, it's wonderful to see the creativity, but in a very tumultuous society where there seems to be a lot of anxiety and a lot of conflict in many areas, I think poetry presents a wonderful source of calming everything down in the moment. And so the more you do, the more moments you're able to calm down in what really is a very tumultuous, anxietous society. So thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And it's actually a lifelong thing because I actually... I write poetry too. And I wrote my wife on her birthday a poem this past year or so. I still write poems, even though I'm in my 70s. So I hope you continue to do that throughout your... I look back at some of the poems that I've written and say, you know, just like the one that you read for us now, it's, you know, you'll look back on that 20, 30, 40 years ago and say, "This is awful good stuff."
Yeah, thank you.
It's good stuff tonight. So make sure you save all the poems you write.
I will, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another round of applause for this gentleman. All right, we will bypass item number six because tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we have two major issues, or major missions, should I say. We have an ordinance that we'd like to speak about regarding the senior tax freeze that sunsetted this past year after five years. We've had many seniors who've called us, wanted to know if we can reinstate it. We've been working for months. There've been several delays, both on the senior tax freeze and the volunteer firefighters' tax freeze. But tonight, we have formalized two drafts for our discussion here. And this was a long journey, a journey, and I mentioned a couple of these fine gentlemen back here whom I've spoken with, that it was a journey that I wasn't too happy with because I don't like waste... I don't like all the weight sometimes that we have in government. You know, this was six, seven, eight months. I like to get things done right away, but there's processes also. So we're going to present the new version of the senior tax freeze and then present an ordinance in addition to the existing ordinance for the volunteer firefighters. So pay particular attention, ladies and gentlemen watching and those that are here. Our goal tonight is to get the Board of Selectmen to agree to present these two ordinances to a town meeting. We're by charter. The town meeting is a legislative body, and the citizens have to vote for both of these. So let's start with...
Well, yeah, let's just clarify. You had said a volunteer firefighter freeze. It's really an incentive program, not a freeze.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
It's a senior tax freeze and a new incentive program for the volunteer firefighters.
So because of... For the sake of the volunteer firefighters, some of them here tonight, I'd like to start with the volunteer firefighter ordinance.
Yep, it's actually first on the agenda.
First on the agenda. And to frame this, and then we're going to turn it over for discussion, to frame this for those watching that don't know what this is about, we have a situation in North Haven where the North Haven volunteer firefighters have a tax abatement program under a tax ordinance. We also have a few, perhaps four to seven, at various times, of our volunteer firefighters who do not live in North Haven, that do not get the benefit. So it is at a time when the volunteer firefighters across the state are leaving for various reasons, other jobs, difficulty in making calls. We don't want to lose any more firefighters, volunteer firefighters, and we want to show those who don't live here but are still serving, doing the drills, making the calls, that we care about them as much as we do all of the other firefighters. So that's kind of framing it out. So why don't we start?
Okay, well, I'll start by reading number seven, which is, "To consider and vote upon whether to recommend that the town meeting adopt Chapter 192 Volunteer Firefighters Incentive Program to the ordinances of the town of North Haven to establish an award incentive program for volunteer firefighters." So we have the proposed ordinance here, Chapter 192.
Yep.
Did you want to give an overview, or could we just start? It is... As the First Selectman said, we have an abatement for volunteer firefighters already for taxation on... That was originally passed in 2001, and then we modified it, I believe, 2019. And so what that does is it gives an abatement based on three different levels of service on their property taxes.
Yes.
So obviously, if the volunteers...
I'm gonna jump in.
Can get the abatement also if they live in town?
If the volunteer firefighters live in town, they're eligible for the abatement based upon the calls, the response times, and the percentages that are already in place calculated by the North Haven Fire Department. So there's ranges. That is going to remain the same.
Right.
The ranges will remain the same.
Right. What's important is you can't do both.
You can't do both, yeah.
Right. That's one important aspect of the new incentive program, which I support this. I just have a couple of questions. It's basically for volunteer firefighters who have not elected to receive or are not eligible to receive an abatement under the existing ordinance.
Yes.
So I assume that would be volunteers that don't live in North Haven.
And we have a couple of volunteers who live in North Haven.
Who don't own property.
Not even cars. Not even cars.
I know. That was one of the questions that I had, went back in 19 when we were talking about this abatement. I said, you know, "A lot of our volunteers are young people and might not own property." And so I thought that was a concern, although they could own a vehicle, but certainly, you know, the abatements run between 1,250 to 1,500 to 2,000 a year, depending upon the percentage of calls that are attended to. So that's much higher than a car tax unless you've got a very, very expensive car, you know? So I think this is a good alternative for those who either are not living in North Haven or who are not eligible for the current abatement because they don't own property. And what I like about it is it has the same percentages.
Yes.
And the same three tiers. So, you know, we hear a lot, especially at budget season, at the fire commission, the fire department workshop, that the number of volunteers is decreasing. So I see this new program, this incentive program, as a good way to attract volunteers and to keep volunteers because it fills that hole that I was concerned about with the existing But my question is... But my question is, and I'm not really, I know that years ago we used to allow volunteers in our North Haven Fire Department who lived out of town. And then I thought that the fire commission wasn't allowing that anymore. But now I think they are. Again, we have some firefighters here.
Fire commission's on board with that.
And as long as they're in close proximity, I consulted with one of the fire commissioners and it was that commissioner's opinion that, um, we, we are allowing volunteers from, who live in other towns as long as they're in a close proximity, you know? Is that, is that correct?
Yes, it's a mile.
Yep.
Within two miles, okay, okay. So, um, so obviously volunteers that don't live in North Haven are not eligible for our abatement.
No.
Because we can only abate our own taxes and so they don't pay North Haven taxes. And again, some, and it very clearly says, those that have not, who've not elected to receive or are not eligible to receive the abatement can, um, through this, uh, new ordinance in chapter 192, um, qualify as long as they are responding to minimum, there's three tiers of minimum response time to fire calls and, um, also, uh, attending, um, fifty percent of the drills. So, you know, there's, it, to me, again, both of these together are not only inspiring, are, are a good mechanism for attracting volunteers, but also, um, inspiring them to answer the calls because that's what we're always hearing about. We have volunteers, they're not, the chief says this all the time, they're not answering the calls. So, not only is this fair that they get this compensation because the volunteers not living in town should be eligible for the same, um, the same benefit, but it's, it's inspirational for bringing in volunteers and for getting them to, the, the more calls they go on, the more they get.
So let me just kind of jump in here, okay? Yes, so, but there's something, there's gonna be one difference though, okay? And these are IRS rules and regulations. So, back in maybe August and September, I met with all the volunteers with the fire chief at the North Haven, or at the Northeast Fire Facility, okay? We spent a lot of time listening, I heard a lot. I've spoken to many of you individually about this. So, the formulas are the same that are in the existing ordinance that's monitored by the fire department. Because of the individuals whom we're trying to help here, they don't live in town, they're going to be receiving what we call a stipend, which is in here, okay? So you can't, you can't, if you live out of town, our, my original thought was go to all the assessors in the different towns and see if we can work something out with each assessor so that the volunteer firefighters who live in Northford or wherever can get the same abatement off their, off their taxes. But we couldn't orchestrate that. That would take two years to try to accomplish. So we went with this route, based on, I talked to Tony McKinney, actually, a couple of times. So we went now with the stipend. They will get the equivalent cash amount as to what the North Haven firefighters, the volunteers who live in North Haven, if, by the formulation that everyone now will, will comply with. However, because it's a check, there has to be a ten ninety-nine form associated with it. We can't get around that, that's an IRS. So I just want everyone to know that. But our goal here is to bring this to a town meeting. We will endorse it. I'll be up there standing up, presenting it, endorsing it. Sally, you see, is on board, we'll hear from Bill shortly. So, this should finally take care of this after all these months that we've been talking about this.
Right, let's be clear, the abate, the existing abatement ordinance gives, in the same amounts, a credit off of the tax bill.
Yes, yeah.
So that's, well, that, therefore, that's why the ten ninety-nine is triggered because this is a, a check, so they're gonna have to declare that.
We'll have public comment.
They're getting a ten, they're getting a ten ninety-nine because they're not, they're not getting a W two.
They're not employed.
The W, employees get a W two, uh, they're getting a ten ninety-nine so there won't be any, um, employee relationship or taxes taken out or anything like that. I did have one question on, um, one, uh, da, 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 da. One ninety-two dash three, uh, D, which is kind of stuck in there after the, uh, the three.
I was gonna bring that one up as well.
The three tiers, yes.
Because I think when you're no longer a fire, a volunteer, um, since you can't do both, this gives you a stipend after you retire.
Right.
Which is actually, which does apply to residents, um, you know, that are still in town with real property. That's actually a nice way to maybe, uh, give them the stipend later on.
Is your mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry. How did I get knocked off? It's really weird, I must've hit it with my elbow. But I think that's really not, I, I think it's, yeah, D, you know, is a stipend. Once a firefighter who lives in town is, and is retired, I think is no longer than, um, you know, can get the abatement, then they can get a stipend for a period of time, you know, based on D. Which I think is a nice, um, a nice way to thank them for a five-year period after they retire, you know, where they can still recognize twenty-five years of service for the time.
Right, and it, it, it mirrors, uh, the abatement. The abatement ordinance, uh, uh, chapter one eighty-four has the same thing. After twenty-five years of service, uh, for five years thereafter, they're, they'll be eligible for the abatement. Um, my only question, uh, I'm just trying to compare the two. Okay, it does say occupy. I just was concerned about the word occupy. It says, "A volunteer firefighter who fully retires from service, has completed at least twenty-five years of service as a volunteer firefighter in the town of North Haven and who occupies a real property in the town of North Haven as his or her principal residence." So, receive the, the stipend for a five-year period. And, um, it will be based on, uh, the lowest incentive that was awarded in the three previous, the three final years, which is similar to the other. Why is it occupy rather than own real property? That's, I, that's the only thing, I, I don't remember questioning the word occupy versus own in, when we did the, amended the abatement. And we amended it just to increase the credits, I believe, in two thousand and nineteen. Back in twen, two thousand and one, when it was first passed, the three tiers were much lower. The abatement amounts were much lower. So, the only amendment was increasing the, the tiers of, of the three tiers. So, I, I wish, uh, counsel was here.
Let me try to give you an answer, okay?
Okay.
So, we have a couple situations where this wouldn't apply to them right now. We have, uh, two volunteer firefighters who live with their parents, okay? So, they, they occupy the home, they're not paying the taxes on the home. And we also could have a situation where, uh, a volunteer firefighter, after thirty years, perhaps turns over, uh, the house to the children but still occupies the house.
Okay.
Puts the children's name on the, on the, on the house, but he, he or she is still living in the house. So that covers that person also.
Or if they rent a property in town, that would cover them as well. I would say, if they decided, uh, you know, give the house to their children or sell their house and they still lived in North Haven, even if they weren't an owner, they would, I think rental property would be covered under the term occupies a real property.
What we try to do is, is think about those scenarios. Uh, one or two exist right now, the rental is the third, and we're trying to cover everything so that no volunteer firefighter who retires after all those years is left out.
Yeah, I, I see that the same word, uh, occupies is used in, in one eighty-four, in the, in the abatement. It's just, uh, you know, I'm being too lawyerly, occupies is, you know, what is the duration, you know, is it a hundred and eighty days of the year? People live in Florida half the year, yeah. All sorts of things clicked in my mind, um, when I, uh, read occup, occupies real property. But, um, I understand what you're saying, it, it would certainly apply to renters, which, uh, the number of renters in town is, is growing as we develop more rental properties. So, um, that was, let me just look at my notes.
We do kind of, I mean, we do mention, I think, you know, we do kind of cover it from a different direction in terms of, um, the remaining portion is his or her principal residence. So, yeah, I think that kind of further clarifies it.
All right.
To indicate that, to indicate that, you know, it is, it is their, is their home as opposed to, you know, them having, um, you know, being here six months a year or whatever, you know, or five months a year and actually the principal residence would be somewhere else.
Well, I would say principal residence is a hundred and whatever, eighty-one.
Eighty-three?
Eighty-three.
Hundred eighty-three days.
Half, more than, one day more than half the days in the year. I just quickly wanted to look at my notes. We just got this for the first time, few hours before this meeting, so, uh, you know, it was a lot to look at this and to compare it with the other one and I had a look at the general statute. So, just, just let me look at my notes for a minute to see if I had written anything else. No, okay, we covered everything. So, uh, yeah, I think this is a good thing because it sort of equals the playing field between, um, volunteers, as far as those who, uh, live in town and are, are certainly eligible if they own property for the abatement versus our volunteers, uh, out of town, uh, who we can't give abatements to, we could, we could give them something. And so, for the reasons I stated, uh, and with the clarifications made, uh, I support this.
All right, so just to let everyone know, so now what happens here is this. So we're gonna read through these resolutions, but I want the volunteer firefighters to know that you're gonna hear, the town meeting, as I mentioned to some of you whom I've spoken with, we want to get this done right away. You'll hear it momentarily, the town meeting will be here Tuesday, February twenty-fifth at six PM. And that's where I'll need, you know, the support for this. We're gonna have our support here. You know, we've been doing this now, as Tony knows, we've talked a couple of times, I said, at least six or seven months. We're bringing it now to the point, it's gonna go to a town meeting for a vote. Hopefully we get this done and get it done and, and take care of these gentlemen that we're talking about. All right, so who's gonna start?
Well, I'll, we'll, we'll go by, we'll follow the agenda.
Yes.
As, I'm assuming we finished number seven, considering to recommend? Unless, Bill, you had other final comments?
Nope, I think, um.
All right, so we'll go to eight. I'll make a motion, resolve to recommend that the town meeting adopt chapter one ninety-two Volunteer Firefighters Incentive Program to the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to establish an award incentive program for volunteer firefighters. That is my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, uh, number nine.
I just want to halt here for a second, okay, so.
Oh, sure.
Did any of them want to?
Well, I wanted, yeah, I want to give you a.
We don't, well, hold on, we have. Well, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to allow anyone who wants to speak on item seven to come to the microphone for public comment limited to volunteer, um, ordinance.
Tom, come on up.
I'll second, I gotta admit.
All in favor, aye, okay.
All in favor, aye.
Evening.
Uh, I just have a quick question about.
Just say who you are, I'm sorry.
Tom Curley, uh, Six Highland Park Road. Uh, I just have a quick question about the resolution that was just passed on our behalf. I'm one of the people that, like you know, I don't own my own home. I still live at home, but I do own my own vehicles. And I do, uh, I earn the two thousand dollar tax bracket limit. I don't use the entire br, uh, tax abatement allowed to me. What happens to the money that I should have earned but didn't use? Like, if I only used a portion of it, does that go back to the town or does that come to me? Cause I did kind of earn, if I owned my own home, I'd be getting the whole allotment of the money, but what happens to the rest of it? Cause I know that could definitely help me financially.
Wait a minute. Well, you could pick which one of these you want to, uh, get your benefit from. As a homeowner, you would want to go with the abatement ordinance.
I don't own my own, own vehicles.
Right, so, um, but you qualify for the highest stipend of two thousand because of your percentages?
Yes.
Okay, so then you would just, going forward, after this is adopted, this is based on, on the assessment year, October first to September thirtieth. I was wondering why that is rather than the fiscal year?
Grand list.
Grand list.
Okay, but, yeah, okay. So, um, another year, you know, calendar year, fiscal year, assessment, grand list year. So, you would, you would pick the ordinance, I would assume, that gives you the greater benefit?
I said, but if.
If you think about a tax abatement, that you owe a tax.
That's a credit.
So you're giving the town money in, uh, and in the case that where you have an abatement, you're not giving the town money, so it's not coming out of your pocket. But in terms of the other choice, in terms of getting the, um, um, award incentive, you know, the stipend, we're giving, the town is giving you money.
Okay.
So, you know, one case it's coming out of your pocket. And, you know, so, and like you're saying with your car, um, more would be coming out of your pocket if you owned, you know, maybe owned a better car or house or whatever. But in this case, you know, the, the, um, the, the incentive is coming into your pocket. So you kind of have, as Sally was saying, Mike is, is saying, you'd have the choice between which one benefits you the most.
Right, you can't do both. You can't get the abatement, so you live in town but, and you own a car or multiple cars?
Truck and a bike, yeah.
Truck and a bike, so you, you're paying motor vehicle tax. So you've been getting a credit off of that, the years that you qualify. So you can't get that plus the, um, stipend incentive in the new, you have to pick which one?
Okay, so I, if I pick, say, the stipend, I'm gonna be getting the whole allotment of?
Two thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that was my question because for many years, I've only been getting the abatement off my vehicles.
Right.
And then the rest of the money that would have been in the abatement has been, gone to the wind.
Right, that was the concern I had years ago with the abatement for those not owning property and they said, well, they're, they're paying car taxes, but the car taxes aren't enough to get you to the two thousand. So, the, this, uh.
Covers you.
This covers you. So you could pick whichever one, um, you know, as long as your percentages are there, you could, but you just can't do both.
I, I understand you can't have your cake and eat it too. I understand that concept. But I just, I was just curious because, like I said, I'm one of the people that qualifies but not, and gets the entire allotment but doesn't use the entire allotment.
Right, I understand that.
Okay.
So, this, this will help you as an in-town volunteer. Uh, I think it was designed more for out-of-town volunteers.
Right.
But it would benefit you as, as well. And someday you maybe will be a homeowner. You're young.
The Lotto's easier.
Okay. Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Unfortunately, it still won't be as good as the abatement because, as Mike said earlier, um, you know, for the two thousand dollars, it'll be income to you. So that'll be subject to federal and state taxes, you know, because you're actually getting income.
Might be subject as well. I'm not sure about that, that, you know, you'd have to.
We do get taxed on our abatements.
Discussion that the abatement.
Yeah, you get a ten ninety-nine for the credit.
Right.
Okay. I didn't, yeah.
So you could, you could see as well. Yeah, that's exactly right, so.
Cause it's like a cancellation of debt, cancellation of debt is income.
For your abatement, so, so you're already, you're already having, I, I was not aware of that, that, uh.
So, everything, everything mirrors each other here. So, one is now with what we just talked about, a check, but the formulas and everything else is the same. We tried to get this done as fairly as we could so that, all those discussions we had, gentlemen, finally, I think we can move forward on this. Right? Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Tom, thank you. All right. Yeah, Reese, come on up if you don't mind, yeah. Reese is the captain of, uh, the Ridge House.
Reese Varney, Two Cindy Lane. First of all, I want to thank the board for, uh, bringing this to long overdue attention. I've been a member for twenty-two years and I've seen a lot of guys from Handen and Wallenford come and go that could have, would have greatly appreciated this. Um, like they said, it's better late than never. So with that being said, we, you know, we thank you for doing it now. I don't fall in that, you know, I own property in town and multiple vehicles because whatever reason it should be, but, so I use it all. My question is gonna be, cause I will get asked this. You're given all members a choice if they want a check or if they want a tax abatement. Is that correct? I mean, you're, so, take me for instance, I. I mean, you're, so, take me for instance, I take the tax abatement, I, it just stays here, you know, you guys take it off my taxes, I pay the balance, whatever. What if I say now, I don't want to do that anymore, I want you to give me the check for $2,000?
Yeah, yeah. Get that.
The wording in the new ordinance, the incentive, says each volunteer firefighter who has not elected to receive or is not eligible to receive an abatement under Article Six of the taxation ordinance. So, it's saying if you have chosen, you, you elect not to take...
Right.
The abatement, you have a choice. That's the way I interpret it.
Yeah.
Do you agree?
Yeah.
So, I'll have a choice of either or.
That's right.
Either I get the check or I pay, or you guys keep the money and deduct it off my property.
Right, you just can't do both, and, and, and again, the percentages and the, the, the three levels are exactly the same amount, so it's not really deciding where I'm going to get more money.
No.
It's, 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 especially in a case like you where you're, you're a taxpayer.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, just because I will get asked that question, I just want to make, make sure to clarify.
Is that clear?
Yeah, and I'd like to say one other thing, when it was brought up earlier, that the volunteers don't respond when we get called. Um, as you know, our numbers are way down. Probably in town, there's less than 20 volunteers between the two companies. Ninety-eight percent of us probably work days, so some of us don't get home till four o'clock, five o'clock. Um, and I have this thing with my guys, I'll never ask them to take food off the table to respond to volunteer, the work comes first. So, saying that we don't respond is because we can't respond, but I assure you, if the tone goes off, and we do, I'll do it one o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the morning, we're out there on the highways, we're out at fire calls, wherever needed, so we are out there, just can't do it during the day, you know, we've addressed the situation with the chief, um, we come up with a plan for that, as you're probably aware of it, so I just want to clarify that, we're not responding because we don't want to respond, we're not responding because we can't.
That's an important distinction, Reese.
Yeah, well, and that's, I didn't say it.
No, I know where you want, I just want...
The chief always tells us this in his budget.
To the public that's watching, they're going to say, well, why are you going to pay the volunteers this tax payment if they don't want to respond? It's not to our point of, we don't want to respond.
Right.
There's times that we can't do the work and family obligations, but we usually, most of the time, we, you know, we will respond.
And you, your group has done a great job, just like you said, Reese, accidents at night, with all the accidents on 91.
Yes.
Your men are out there.
We're out there constantly, and, uh, and that's what we're here for, you know, as a volunteer, we're here, we're here to support the career side of it, you know, company one and company two, we're out there supporting them, whatever role they need us, that's what we're there for, and it's very important to them, because as you know, their staff, and if theirs low as well, they need more manpower, just like every town does. So, with that being said, we're doing what we can until we can get to have a way to fill for them.
Okay.
Are there any, while I have the advantage of being able to speak with such a long-term volunteer, I'm going to take advantage. You, you say that you, you can't go during the day because you're, you're working. Are there any employers that will accommodate volunteer firefighters? Or you, if you're gone for the four hours or five hour, it could, could be that long, depending upon the nature of the call, uh, they, they won't pay you, or you have, you get docked personal time, or...
I'm, I'm very fortunate, because I work for the town as well, I work for the Board of Ed.
Okay.
I'm allowed to leave for certain calls, I won't leave for a dumpster fire or something like that, but any major incidents, um, there's an agreement between the town and the Board of Ed's side that if I'm needed, I'm allowed to leave work.
Without affecting your pay or your personal time or hours?
Correct.
We need more employers that do that.
And by, by law, um, they cannot stop the volunteer from leaving, they don't have to pay them. They can't scrutinize them, they can't, uh, give them any kind of punishment, but, um, we do have guys here now that don't, you know, work for companies that, that you won't pay them, they can miss a day of work, but they're not getting paid for it. You know, if they leave work in the middle of the day, unless they use personal time or whatever.
Exactly, no, and that I understand, like you said, you've got to put food on the table, um, but it's, it's, uh, it's unfortunate that more employers, you know, are like the town that, that will allow that, um...
Yeah, I mean, I wish we could, but...
Too bad the, the state couldn't kick in some money, we get money from the state for the elderly tax benefit, don't we?
We do, but, but Reese, but Reese makes good points here. Some of the guys, you know, they, they can leave, but they're not going to get paid, and that's, that's their income.
Taking food off the table, you know?
Right.
But I, I, I think this, you know, what you guys are doing is a good thing, I, I think it'll probably bring in some younger guys, like I said, we're all getting up there in age that we've all been there, you know, some of us 20, 35 years, we've got guys with 35 years, almost 40 years, and now, um, I think if you see some kids that are coming in that don't have the value and they're thinking of, you know, even if for a couple of years, step is shown to go to career, whatever, they're seeing that $2,000 check that they get offered, and maybe an incentive to get some younger guys in here and get some more volunteers, uh, signing up, so, we appreciate it, though, I just want to...
What do you think, what other steps do you think the town can take to attract volunteers?
There is none, this is nationally, I mean, it's, it's, it's all over, you know, um...
Because we used to have 100 volunteers, I mean, people always worked during, during the day.
I think when I started, there was like 130.
Yeah.
Um, there's actually a waiting list to become a volunteer when I get in up at West Ridge. Um, I just made the cut, and then I think we had 35, you max at 35, I believe it was, and then there'd become a waiting list for somebody to leave, that's how, and you had to be there, you never got on a truck, if, if, you know, if you didn't get there quick enough, you, you were left behind.
Wow.
Now, we don't have that problem, but, um, I hope it turns back around, you know, it, it's a great, you know, you, you know, you brought up Sherman being a role model citizen, which he was, um, every, everybody who volunteers is a role model citizen, to do what we do for free, and we do it, and it's not for the money, it's just we love our town, we want to support it, and that's why we do it, so...
Right.
Well said.
Well, thank you.
Well said, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I don't have any, um, do you have any objection if I give Reese the, uh, a copy?
No, please do, yeah.
Yeah, why don't you take a copy, you know, because you've been, you've been listening to us talk about it, but I don't think you've seen the actual, so let me give you, you know, I haven't written on mine or anything yet, so there's a nice clean copy. You can make copies, and that way at least you could see what we were talking about, you know, and, actually, and you'd get a co, uh, so on September 25th, I think we, the special town meeting, we would make these available, but I think it's important that you see it before that, you know, and you know what, what's being voted on.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
February 25th, okay?
I'm sorry, I said, I said September, I meant February, back in the wrong, wrong year.
Where are you, Bill? Okay.
Nancy Barrett, Cresview Drive. First of all, I'd just like to thank this board, because I think this is long overdue, and I completely support this, uh, this resolution. Uh, I think that our volunteer firefighters, we owe them a tremendous debt of gratitude. I personally am always very proud when I read, uh, in the news that, um, there was a response to a fire in our town, and they list off all of the different engines and response vehicles, and we can see that the volunteers are also involved in the middle of the night, including during, uh, I think it was during the holidays over on Rimmon Road, in the middle of the night, and I think that a, a lot more damage would have been done without your services, so I, I greatly appreciate it. So, I just have one, one question. Again, we don't have the benefit of, of having the details of this resolution in front of us now, I'm sure that we will for the, the town meeting, but, um, I know that the fire chief has worked with our volunteers to establish a, a new policy that, uh, he won't call on them for certain hours of the day in order to respect your, your careers and your ability to, uh, to make a living and, and put food on the table. But I think some of the criteria that you listed included, um, either a tax abatement or a stipend, depending upon the number of calls, the response time, and then attendance at various drills. So, I'm just wondering, so, so number of calls is not, not part of it?
No, no, not, not response times, it, it, um, for, for example, the, the first tier is a firefighter responding to 25% or more of total fire calls and attending 50% or more of drills will receive an award stipend of 1,250. And then the next tier is 35% of calls, and then again, the same 50% of drills, and is 1,500, and C, the firefighter responding to 45% or more of the total fire calls and attending 50% of the drills gets the 2,000. Those are the three exact tiers in the abatement, uh, as well.
So, so in that denominator, in that denominator of that, those ratios, have you reduced the number of potential calls that you can be called for based upon this new policy? I'm just a little bit concerned that they might be able, might not be able to hit those numbers based upon this new policy.
It doesn't affect us, because when we're as serviced from 7:00 A.M. to 3:00 P.M., then calls do not count against...
That's my question, that's, that's my question.
The call to 3:00 P.M. will start being charged to us, either we're there, we get a credit, or we get charged.
Got it. Perfect, okay, I just wanted to make sure that you were not at a disadvantage based upon this new...
We covered that back in the summertime when I met with...
Perfect, okay, that was my only concern, again, thank you so much.
Right, so those calls aren't in the denominator.
So, the denominator is, has been reduced, in other words. Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Very good question, though.
Okay, gentlemen, February 25th, okay, 6:00, right up here, all right? Okay, very good. All right, next.
Um, I'll do...
Did you have one more question from...
I found an error with this.
It's okay, it's...
Where?
Maybe, come up to the podium, please.
So, in, uh, uh, 192-3, it says, on Article C, it says firefighter responding to 45% or more of the total fire calls, and the 10 and 50 percent, which is correct, but the 45% is, it's only 40%. Our highest tier is 40%, unless I got changed without us being told about it. We've, it's been 40.
1993, okay.
Well, in the, in the abatement, it's also 45.
It's, we've always been told 40%, I, I mean, I've been, I know guys who just make it with 40. I don't know when there's 45, when the 45 got put in there.
All right, we'll look at that, we'll...
Well, yeah, just, yeah, I mean, you'd have to see when it got changed over, because I, I do know, I mean, we've all lived at 40%. Um, I think even on the tax abatement forms that we fill out yearly and turn into the town, it says 40% on there.
It does, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, because this, this was the amendment that we did in 2019, right, Val? I have it right here.
In the original, uh, abatement, uh, ordinance, which was dated and adopted on May 8th of 2000, number C or item C was 40%, but then in 2019, September 23rd, when it was amended, it was changed to 45%.
Well, that was done without, I don't know, because that's first, we're hearing of...
Well, let's talk to the chief on that tomorrow, okay? We would have had to got that somewhere, right?
Well, yeah, we, we have, I think it's critical that the two status match.
Match, they have to match, yeah.
And here's the, like Val said, the September 23rd, 19, and it's, uh, 45.
So, the only way they could match is if you went back and, and amended that ordinance from 2019, and we'd have to start this all over again.
184, that we did in 19, it has 45.
Yeah, like, I'm, I'm almost positive, the form we fill out every year says 40% is a high tier.
Yeah.
And then it goes 40, I think, 40, 30, 20, it goes something like that, 40, 30, 25?
That might have been the old, what was the old one in 2000?
The one in 2000 was 20%, 30%, 40%.
That's right, and that's what I think our form still says, that's why we're, that's why I'm going, that's why we said it's, it's, this 45 got put in there, then we're not aware of it, that's, I'm not saying anything against which now, but it was just never told to us.
But how about the, was, are you, is the 25 and 35?
That's always been, yeah, it went in one of them three tiers, 40 was, uh, the highest. We never, we were never at 45.
Right, I actually, I have it here, it, it, Val, it was 184-15, um, the old one from 2000, it was, actually, it was 20% calls and 20% drills, was 500, right?
The one from, uh...
The old one.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, it was 20, 20% and 500.
And then it was 30, 30, 30% calls, 30% drills, 750.
Correct, 750.
And then 40, 40, 40 calls was 1,000.
40, 40, 1,000.
Then we changed, we increased the amounts to, let me make sure I got the right one, to, um, 1250, 1,500, and 2,000, but increased the percentages to 25 and 50, meaning 25% calls, 50% drills, 35% calls, then 50% drills, and 45%. So, when the stip, when the abatements went up, because we're talking about the old one, 184, when they went up to the higher amounts, the percentages went up for calls...
Okay.
And the attending for drills also went up, right, Val?
I think the drill's still 50%.
The, the drills used to be 20, 30, and 40%, now they're...
Yeah, the drills are minimums.
Now they're 50 for every, all three tiers.
The drills are at like minimums 25, anything below 25%.
We have to...
Yeah, it's all 50.
Okay, I just, as first we're hearing of it, I, I, like I said, I'm just going by the old form that I always remember seeing, so...
Yeah, I'm looking for the...
Maybe that form's got to be updated.
I'm looking for the old, Reese, hold on, Reese.
You bring up a good point, so I think they need to...
Item B, do you have the old one?
I have it here.
Look at that.
Yeah, item B, because that's on or after July 1st of 2021.
What is this?
So...
This is the elderly homeowner.
So, I want, I want to make sure that Reese understands the amount that was and now what is. So, when, apparently, looking at this, it went 40 to 45%, but the abatements went up also.
Increased, right, right.
So, I'd be interested in seeing that form that you're talking about, that Reese, when I said that to you.
Yeah, yeah, we get them yearly from Yvonne next door, and we fill them on, it comes, chief approves, and it comes here.
Must be outdated.
The form is not in conjunction with the most recent 2019 amendment, right? That's how I see it.
That's how I see it, I feel like the form might be outdated.
It may be, and that's why, that's why it's, when we heard 45.
So, we move forward and do it the right way.
So, there was a vote in 2019, because the, the amounts went up, meaning the abatements, but the 40 went to 45.
Yeah, but I, I made 41 last year, I got the 2,000.
Yep.
Okay, well, as long as, I mean, you were complying with the form, but the form isn't complying with the statute, with the ordinance.
Yeah, correct.
So, we'll, we'll have to... So we'll, we'll have to.
I'm glad you looked at it so that it hopefully gets clarified.
As you see, the, the form's gotta get corrected, then it investigates, like, set forty-five.
No, so.
Yeah.
Let's just make sure it's good going, going forward.
But if the form gets corrected, I, Tony, you know, he made forty-one last year, I think it was, right? You said forty-one percent. How does that affect, does that adversely affect this?
You, that you would drop your tier because you didn't make the forty-five.
You'd go down to the lower tier.
Right.
You'd go down to over thirty-five.
You're like, oh, right.
Fifteen.
I guess I was looking at it the other way. Could you get to forty-five if you're, if, in this case, forty-one?
You'd have to get forty-five or over to get to two thousand.
Right.
That, that never happened. I never heard of it.
Yep.
Well.
Okay. Tell us. Find out from the chief.
This is, I guess that amendment never made it to the form, right?
That's what it appears.
What other exponent? We're not, we could only fix it moving forward, we can't change the past.
Yeah, that's fine.
That I'm sure of.
There's a shock that it is.
All right.
Okay.
So we gotta talk tomorrow.
Yeah.
About the form, okay? So, thank you for bringing it up. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We'll go to number nine?
Yep.
Trying to move us along here. So now we are going to, I'll read number nine, "To consider and vote upon whether to recommend that the town meeting adopt amendments to Article Ten, property tax freeze relief for certain elderly homeowners of the taxation ordinance at Chapter One Eighty-Four of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven, to extend the term of the tax relief program through the twenty-twenty-nine grant list, to clarify the tax obligation in the event of revaluation or of improvements being made to the subject property, and to establish a lien for the total tax relief granted as deferred taxes, requirements for the reimbursement of the deferred taxes to the town, and penalties for delinquent payment as well as related application requirements." So a lot to consider. We have.
So, you have the red line, right?
Yeah.
So the red line indicates what has been taken out and what has been put in. And if we look at page three or four, I believe it is, this is where it starts.
Yeah, maybe we just give a little background. We, we did, it's kind of funny we're doing this, 'cause wasn't Mr. Sherman Katz?
He was on, he was on the board.
He was on the board. We had an ad hoc committee that, that was formed to help promulgate this senior tax freeze. When was that? Eighteen or seventeen?
Uh, March twenty-ninth of two thousand sixteen.
Sixteen, wow, the time goes. And so the senior tax freeze, if you met certain eligibility requirements, your, your taxes were, were frozen, even if the mill rate went up. And then it expired. And now we're gonna bring it back, but we're bringing it back with some significant changes.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to.
Yes.
People might, what, what does a freeze mean? What's that? Okay, so I thought, a little background, okay?
So this is kind of complicated, folks, okay? So the first couple of red lines are the date changes from the old ordinance, which starts at ordinance one eighty-four dash thirty-eight. So if we take, go to the second, not the second, not the third, but the fourth page, or actually the fifth page, the red line additions and subtractions start with item three.
Right. And, I mean, it's part of, you have to actually go back to the previous page, it's under B amount of tax. And one and two are the same, and three and four, I guess, are new.
Yes.
Right.
So let me tee it up this way. Back in the beginning, this tax ordinance passed by only one vote at a town meeting. I think it was fifty-one to fifty in favor of this. Back then, there was some controversy on this. The controversy was, controversy was that there was not what other towns do in terms of what's called a clawback. The way, the way other towns worked it, and we didn't do it this way back then. I'm gonna use some numbers, okay? If the taxes on a home are seven thousand dollars a year, and those taxes went up two hundred dollars a year, every year, the freeze back then kept the senior at the seven thousand. The accumulated incremental taxes over five years would have been a thousand dollars that they've saved, using this analogy. What we didn't do last time that's in this ordinance is that, God forbid, when the senior passes and passes the home to the heirs, the clawback that's in here will take back the thousand dollars back to the town. That was the source of controversy back then. And the source of controversy back then, I'm just reporting the news, ladies and gentlemen, for those that are watching, why should the heirs get the full value without, they're getting the value of the house in its entirety, it's their house, they should pay back to the town, like other towns do. The rise in taxes every year after it was frozen from that seven thousand dollars I mentioned. So this ordinance has this clawback in it. The clawback will say this, okay, that once the heirs receive the home, whatever the tax savings were per year over the five-year period goes back to the town.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the old way, there was no clawback, but when the heirs took title to the property, or the estate sold the property to the new owner, you know, the, the freeze was gone, 'cause, yeah, unless it's bought by somebody else eligible. But, anyway, so let, so, you know, they're not frozen forever, so even the, even the old ordinance, you know, once it transferred, that was the end of the freeze, but we weren't taking the money back. And now that is in here.
It's in here.
Right.
And because it wasn't end, that's why it's so narrowly passed. And we can make an argument with some of the people in this room, that when we, we voted for it back then, that's how it passed.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
You voted for it.
Yeah, we, we were counting. You and I, I was counting one side.
Stacy, Stacy, you voted for it.
Yep, I know.
If the three of us at that time didn't vote for it, probably would've, would've failed. And Bill, you were, you were on the board of finance then, I believe, so, but.
Those were the days. Yeah, so, the question I had, and will have, we're going to need, I'm surprised council's not here tonight.
She wasn't available.
But we're gonna try.
Council is gonna have to be here on the twenty-fifth.
Absolutely, yes. Yep. Either, either Jen or Jeff, so.
Okay. Because what did I have a problem with? What, it's not really a problem, it's just, I'm not, if you're looking on that, what page here? The pages aren't numbered, unfortunately.
I know, I missed they were.
But looking at the next page after the, the one you sent us to here, one eighty-four dash forty-two, there's quite a bit of, of redlining, which means new stuff here. And it says that, that you have to get, reach an agreement, the agreement will be a lien against the subject real property, that's for the clawback. So, and it's going to be recorded on the land records. I just, my question for, for council is, you know, I'm, I'm a, I do real estate transactions, and I don't do a lot of reverse mortgages, but I've done some, and these are the kinds of folks that are eligible for reverse mortgages, and the people struggling financially might, are gonna, gonna be looking for this benefit, this freeze. They may also have a reverse mortgage, or want to apply for one, and a lot of reverse mortgages today have what you call the HELOC, Home Equity Line of Credit. And I'm wondering if this lien is gonna affect their eligibility for a reverse mortgage, but I'll have to ask the council, council that, or I'll talk to a title company.
I'm just.
Yeah.
Please, I probably should be talking.
No, go ahead.
Wouldn't you have to have a lien if there, if there's a debt to the town? I mean, how could you not have a lien? Like, if someone owes, has to sue or use taxes, and it gets to the point where the town says, okay, you owe more than just one year, or whatever, a lien is put, that's what we do, we put a lien. So when you owe something to the town, don't you have to legally have a lien to protect the town, to get the money back?
Well, we didn't have a lien in the old one because there was no clawback.
Right.
And it, and a lien is, you're exactly right, you put a lien on property when, when you're behind, but you're not in, you're, while this person is alive.
Right, I know, but I'm just saying.
They're not late.
But still in debt to the town, so isn't that protection for the town to have the lien? If you didn't have the lien, then how could you legally, when they die, or however, transfer the property? How, what authority do you have to take that money back?
I know. I, I, I'm sure that there is a way around it, I just, because like you say, a lot of other towns do this clawback, and they probably have lien provisions. I just wanna make sure with the new reverse mortgage products out there, because one of the big things about a reverse mortgage is you have to be current on taxes and insurance. Now, when you're in the freeze and you're not, you're, you're, you're getting the advantage of, for your example, paying just seven thousand for five years, you're, you're not, you're, you're keeping them current based on your eligibility, application, and approval for the program. So you, you're current, but even though you're current, there's a lien. So I just, you know, there must be something that the title companies will ensure over. I just wanted to, I'll talk to council about that.
And it could.
Maybe at the same time also ask, do we, does the town need to put a lien on it every year, for every year that this happens?
I, probably not. It would probably just be one.
Or can they just do a single lien?
It would just be one lien. Well, lenders don't like a lien any less than they like a lot of liens, 'cause tax liens have priority over mortgages. But that's just, I, I understand the, the clawback.
See, amount of the lien is gonna be different every year.
I feel like I have to watch that, that town meeting, 'cause if it's around still, because was that really the clawback, really the, the lack of a clawback, the real problem?
It was one of several problems.
'Cause I remember a lot of other issues related to Title Nineteen, and, you know, going back nine years, you know, but.
I, I think that it was a number of issues. However, what wasn't maybe as demonstrative, demonstratively stated, because people didn't want to stand up from a microphone and talk about, why would the heirs get the benefit of it when it's the town's money? That was a lot behind the scenes on that. We heard that in my office. It was a very difficult issue, because in the end, I was the one that stopped the movement for the clawback back then, but now everybody else does it. I, I stopped it internally, I mean, stopped it internally. Because there was a movement internally. Mike, we have to do this, all the other towns do it this way. But I don't think we can do it anymore like that.
Okay.
I'm afraid it'll fail if we, if we do it like we did in the past.
Right. Well, because you're saying, and I'm sure many towns have the clawback, and they must use, use a lien mechanism to protect that clawback, right? So there's, must be a, a way to address this, so that it won't interfere with any, you know, let's say they, they get approval for the freeze, the lien goes on, and then they wanna get a reverse mortgage, there must be.
Yeah.
Whether they have to give up the freeze, I don't know.
It may end up being a choice, too, if someone.
Yeah, I, I think there's gotta be a way around it, because the obligation is to keep the taxes current, and they are current, so, even though they're gonna be due later.
Yep. There's no doubt, there's questions on this, that's one of, that Sally mentioned, so my goal was to get it to a town meeting, and like we're talking here, get the town attorney here to explain it and have the public vote on.
Well, there's a lot more new stuff than just, well, I'm looking through here. Most of it is, is related to the deferred, basically what we're doing is we're deferring the taxes.
Deferring the taxes.
We're freezing them while the eligible homeowner is alive, and then we are, we're deferring them until other occurrences, whether it's the death of the eligible person, or the transfer or sale of the property to someone, someone else.
And also, here in all this language, is, as a result of the clawback, there's a section here that talks about if there's a delinquency with the heirs paying it back, then there's the eighteen percent interest annually computed. So that's by state law.
Or if it's no longer your primary, you know, your primary residence.
Right.
Right. Well, it's good that they give nine months without interest, because it could take that long to get the estate.
That's exactly why I figured it that way. You're absolutely right, yes.
Yeah, and so.
But again, not only, but you also need, you also only get nine months if it's no longer your primary residence.
Right.
Which you know, in terms of reverse mortgages, that becomes an issue as well.
Yeah.
In terms of that becoming due when it's no longer your primary residence.
Again, I don't want to overly alarm with the, my reverse mortgage question, 'cause I, I have to do my own research.
I think it's a valid.
I, I was hoping that council was gonna be here and say, oh, yeah, there's something to cover that, or whatever, an exception for title insurance, or some, some sort of. But whenever I hear lien, huh, you know.
People don't like it.
No, it's a bad word. But I, I, so I don't want to overemphasize that issue, 'cause it may very well not be a problem.
This would fall under, Mike, under, the administration of this would fall under tax, under the tax collector.
Well, it's a collaborative effort, the tax collector and the assessor, but yeah, I would say, Val, what do you think on that?
I think it's more, more the assessor than it is the tax collector.
And the reason I ask that simply is, is that, you know, and I assume that, you know, that you've already talked to both the assessor's office and the tax collector's office, is it, is it something that they administratively can handle? In terms of, you know, going into the, you know, putting liens on and actually making sure this all gets, because, you know, it could be the lesser of two, if there's a revow, and, so it, it actually does have some, you know, it is a complicated, complicated addition to the rule.
Well, it's certainly more work for the, it's certainly more work for the town, for the assessor and the tax.
But we've drafted in a way that actually works for that.
I don't think so.
I mean, even the old program was additional work for the town, and that, you know, they, they still, they still have to administer it, so it's additional work and record keeping.
It would be written in a way that, that it's administratively.
I, I don't think so.
Let me, let me ask you this. How, how many folks took advantage of the freeze in the first freeze period, the first time this was?
Fifty-seven, maybe?
Yeah, okay. I mean, all of the other stuff is the same as far as qualifying. This is, including the age, that was an issue.
That was an issue.
Is it seventy?
Right.
And some people wanted it sixty-five, similar to twelve dash one seventy double A, which is the, the regular elderly and disabled statute.
Yep.
In fact, that is sixty-five. But seventy was put in, and that's, I think I asked, why not sixty-five, but it was seventy, and so. But it's also a, the same eligibility requirements are there, nothing has changed. The, it's still both income-based and asset-based, which is unusual, because usually, a lot of public benefit programs are either income-based or asset-based. This is both.
Both.
So your income has to be the same limits of the, the regular elderly, the twelve dash one seventy double A, which I, I think it's for a single person, it's in the low forties. Married, it's, you know. So that hasn't changed, the, the qualifying income, so you have to be under, under that. And then there's asset limits also, and that's probably what the assessor spends, most of, assessor's office spends most of their time doing, is qualifying the people, because they have to review tax returns and, and asset financial disclosures. And, and the same asset limits are, are in this, depending upon the number of years that you've lived in town, which in, in a nutshell, the longer you've lived in town, the more assets you could own and still qualify, but the income is still the same. So the, and that was, the big thing was, well, who's eligible? Well, you have to be under the certain income levels, and you have to have less than a certain amount of assets, not including, which is good, the value of your home. So they're looking at, so that is probably the big. So that is probably the biggest administrative.
Yeah, it is.
Task in administering these applications, I would think. So. And of course, the Board of Finance has to put a cap on this, right? I don't remember the cap. Seventy.
Well, we had to put in the budget, let's say it was $70,000.
I thought it was 75 or whatever, yeah. So the, this, the Board of Finance will have to do that again?
It's in here, yes.
Okay.
It's on the last page, under A.
Prior to May 15th of 2025, the Board of Finance will establish a maximum amount or cap for the aggregate amount of benefit available, otherwise it's prorated, right?
Yep.
I don't know if we exceeded the cap or not, but would you say that we're 57?
Approximately 57, 53 or 57.
Somewhere in the 50s. So the question is if the total benefit was in excess of the cap, then it was prorated. So, okay. I think it's good to bring it back because I'm sure it benefited the folks that will be applying, that did apply.
And with revale coming up, with revale, I think this is a big year for this.
Right, well, but they missed out on the last two years where we had two mils increase each year. So nothing is freezing that.
No, basically we can't go back, no?
No, we cannot, this keeps coming up, we can't go back. So I am glad that it's coming back. I questioned a while ago why we let it lapse and it just did, but, you know, we're moving forward.
Right.
You know, I think again, it is important to know that not only, that it's no longer your principal residence or you no longer qualify for the, you know, the, this deferral of taxes, they become due.
Right.
So, you know, so that could happen well before you either die or sell the property.
Right.
You know, which is again, not dissimilar to, you know, like you said, with a reverse mortgage. It's no longer your principal residence.
Okay.
So, so I think, you know, which I think, you know, the people who might apply for this, I think need to understand that that becomes a new caveat.
And I think, you know, back then, some people shied away from it because of the way the ordinance was written then, and there might be more who shy away from it because of the clawback issue.
Stay on their side, if your assets have gone up and you no longer qualify for the program, you might be very well able to pay for, as part of your. You know, so you did benefit and at least they were, you didn't have to put that money out in those earlier years.
And this bill, you might want to talk about this too. This is over and above, if this passes, the existing benefits that we have for the seniors. So, income-based, so.
Yeah, I mean, it is a good program to help people out, you know, and, you know, I think you have to realize that, you know, it, in fairness, it is, it is not a tax forgiveness, it is, you know, to be fair to other taxpayers. This is a deferred tax and I think, I think the thing that maybe justifies it being a deferred tax is the the fact that just about all of us have experienced some real appreciation in our property values. That I think is important. So hopefully this hopefully takes care of some people who need it and doesn't treat other taxpayers unfairly based on the changes.
Okay.
And they have to.
By them not being able to do this, yes.
You have to not only be 70 or at least one spouse 70, but you have to have lived in North Haven for at least five years to be eligible. And doesn't it say, I can't find it right now, but I thought I read that you had to be receiving the longstanding elderly. Isn't that in here?
It might be, I think I saw that.
Where did we find, see that? Oh, again, we got to go back to the beginning and count the pages, one, two, three, page four.
Four, number five.
Applicants must also be qualified and receiving tax credits under the State of Connecticut Elderly and Disabled Homeowners Tax Credits. That's that section 12-170AA that, you know. So they have to be receiving that credit in order to apply for this.
And that hasn't changed from the original.
Right, right. Well, just, I mean, if you were to go up to the average North Havener and say, what are the terms of the old tax freeze, somebody.
No, I know, no, I was just making a point.
I know, so, I know, it hasn't changed, but people should be aware.
Absolutely.
That's why I'm bringing up, they have to have lived here for five years and all these other things. No, they're not new, but they're, you know. So, okay.
I noticed that before, that brings up a good point, Sally, because I did print off separately for a different reason, the elderly homeowners are totally disabled tax credits program on our tax site.
Yeah.
And if you look at, to receive local benefits, looks like if you're married, your income has to be limited to $60,400. You know, based on, based on what's on our town site.
Okay.
So, you know, which is well under. I think, you know, maybe what might apply under the other criteria we're seeing on the second page.
Where are you seeing, oh, requirements to receive local, okay. Because I had the $40,000 for married, unmarried, single and 50s for married, this one here. 438534. That's requirements to receive state benefits. 65 years old. Requirements to receive local benefits. Okay, they're higher. I thought it said they were the same.
Thought it was the same.
I thought it was, because second page, 2D, says the taxable and non-taxable income of such taxpayer, the total of which, blah, 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 under the property tax relief program was not in excess of limits set forth in 12-170AA. So I thought that it was the same qualifying income level for the town and the state reading that. But this has different ones.
They printed that off the website today.
Who's website?
Website today.
Who's? The towns?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm not going to question it.
At least I believe it's their town website.
Anyway. We have to have counsel available on February 25th, so I think we could move on.
We will move on, move on.
We both, we all, we're, I'm going to resolve to recommend this, so I'll make that motion. Number 10, I'll move that, resolved to recommend that the town meeting adopt the amendments to Article 10, Property Tax Freeze Relief for certain elderly homeowners of the taxation ordinance at Chapter 184 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to extend the term of the tax relief program through the 2029 grant list to clarify the tax obligation in the event of revaluation or other improvements being made to the subject property and to establish a lien for the total tax relief granted as deferred taxes. Requirements for the reimbursement of the deferred taxes to the town and penalties for delinquent payment as well as related application requirements. So I'll make that motion to recommend.
All right, thanks Sally, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, next.
Should I do the call?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we call for a special town meeting of the, a special meeting of the town meeting to be held Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the upstairs conference room, number one of the North Haven Memorial Town Hall, 18 Church Street, North Haven, Connecticut, 06473, for the following purposes. A, to consider and vote upon whether to adopt Chapter 192 Volunteer Firefighters Incentive Program to the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to establish an award incentive program for volunteer firefighters. B, to consider and vote upon whether to adopt amendments to Article 10, Property Tax Freeze Relief for certain elderly homeowners of the taxation ordinance at Chapter 184 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to extend the term of the tax relief program through the 2029 grant list to clarify the tax obligation in the event of revaluation or of improvements being made to the subject property and to establish a lien for the total tax relief granted as deferred taxes, requirements for the reimbursement of the deferred taxes to the town and penalties for delinquent payment as well as related application requirements. I will make that motion for that call.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, let's do resignations, item number 13. Billy, you want to start?
12.
I'm sorry, 12, yes.
Yes, I'll motion, make a motion for the approval of the resignation of Heidi A. Betker.
That's Betker, yeah.
Her name correctly, 45 Beach Street. From the Blight Prevention Appeals Board, term to expire December 31st, 2025.
Second.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Heidi, I'd like to personally thank you for all your service down through the years.
She served a lot of years on that board.
She really did. Thank you very much, Heidi.
And I will move for the appointment of Alden Mead, 200 Remen Road, from an alternate to a full seat on the Blight Prevention Appeals Board to fill the vacancy of the unexpired term of Heidi A. Betker, set to expire December 31st, 2025.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second Alden's appointment.
All right, first, Alden, thank you very much for your willingness to serve, to replace Heidi, who, like we said, spent a lot of years on that board. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Next is a motion for the appointment of Louis G. Silva, 145 Beulah Street, to the Economic Development Commission to fill the unexpired term of Robert Zambrano, set to expire December 31st, 2025.
Second.
All right, motion second. In discussion, I'd like to thank Louis, he's, you see the resume here, he's quite impressive.
Very, very impressive.
So I've met with him, I like him, he's a North Haven resident, of course, so all those in favor?
I'll move for the appointment of Frank Menjert, 44 Canterbury Way, to the Community Services Commission to fill the unexpired term of Donna Malley, set to expire December 31st, 2026. I just, well, do you want to second that?
Yeah, I'll second Frank's appointment.
Yeah, I just, all the other names have the party affiliation.
There's a typo, I'm sorry, that's my fault, she's a U.
A U?
Yep.
So you're replacing a U with an R?
Yes, I just, it was purely just me forgetting to put it in.
To put the U, okay. And of course, that's a nine-member commission.
Right.
So I believe this, there's no more than six, so this won't.
No, this won't affect.
Adding another R won't, won't, okay.
In the discussion, let me just say that Louis and Frank represent, well, we've been trying to attract for years here, young people who, what we talked about earlier, you can make a difference, you know, in this town with the way that it's structured. These are young people, very successful people, who want to give back to their community. I can make an argument that both these people here, Louis would be on the top 100 people, 30 years old and plus, that sometimes is reported in some of these statewide journals. And Frank has been a very successful entrepreneur, built his own technology company from scratch and has sold the company and wants to make it, wants to help the town.
Right, okay, thank you.
All right, so we voted, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, property tax, 13.
I'll make a motion that we approve the property tax refunds reflective in the agenda. There's a lot of them.
I will second those refunds.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
So ladies and gentlemen, the next meeting here, our Board of Selective Meeting is Thursday, March 6th, here at the top floor of Town Hall. We're at the point, public comment, any public comments? All right, hearing none?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Please come to the town meeting.
February 25th.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Two important issues.
Very much so.
Night.